Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
We will call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Here.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Present.
Council President Pridgen?
Ikey.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Present.
President Protam Scanlon?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Coram is present.
Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you. I thought I would start today by quoting a well-known ordained Baptist minister, the late Congressman John Lewis, and the thoughts that he had on Luke Chapter 6. These are his words. "I'm deeply concerned that many people today fail to recognize that the movement was built on deep-seated religious convictions, and the movement grew out of a sense of faith, faith in God, and faith in one's fellow human beings. We'd ask questions about what would Jesus do? In preparing for the sit-ins, we felt that the message was one of love, the message of love in action. Don't hate. If someone hits you, don't strike back. Just turn the other side. Be prepared to forgive. That's not anything any constitution says about forgiveness. It's straight from the scripture, reconciliation." I've deeply moved by those words. I'm deeply moved at his passing and the legacy that the late congressman leaves behind and those of you who serve in public office, and what his words remind and stir in my heart and soul, and the ordained Baptist minister in him that comes out so wonderfully in that quote. Last night I had an unusual opportunity. Reverend Terry King from Saving Grace Ministries reached out to me. He had mostly Caucasian pastors who he wanted to bring to the Underground Railroad Church, and many of you have been to the old Michigan Street Baptist Church, and we couldn't go in because of COVID, but we gathered outside, and Bishop Henderson, come on now, Bishop Henderson, he's been doing this a very long time. Some of you have been on his precious tours, and to see him, frail as he is now, mask in place because of COVID, but taking us back to the living history of this city that's so wonderfully framed at the Michigan Street Baptist Church as a primary stop on the Underground Railroad. Just a couple of thoughts that came to me last night as I stood there. The first was that that church is living history here in our city. This isn't a museum they built to put artifacts in. The church itself stands as a living monument, a testimony of how it was that this church held safe runaway slaves that had made huge sacrifices and faced either being deported back or arrested, but they fought for freedom and came through our city in that freedom flight. And it was interesting, Bishop talked about the white grocer up on the corner, that if they couldn't find the church, they were told to go to the white grocer and he'd direct them, because there were a whole lot of people involved in that struggle in our city, and finally the Native Americans that rode the boats filled with escaped slaves across the Niagara River to freedom in Canada. You know, this city, when it worked together across all those lines, was the freedom portal, and I believe that's still our call today. Bow with me as we pray. Father, thank you so much for the words of the late Congressman Lewis. Thank you for his fight for civil rights, and Father, for what he framed and modeled along with so many of his friends and colleagues. Thank you for all those that stood for so much and the price they paid for freedom. And then last night, as we were at the Underground Railroad Church, I was reminded of all those and the price they paid for freedom right here in Buffalo, New York. Lord, thank you that that fight still continues today. Show us your way, your path forward to being instruments of change, policies and procedures in place to make Buffalo a better place for everyone, all, and that, Lord, any that are down, any that are on the bottom side, even as some of these leaders have modeled for us. Lord, weave and step now into your words in Luke Chapter 6, that like Congressman quoted. Thank you, Father, for this meeting. You know, it's very full, and there'll be busy staff in all of the offices for the month of August, but, Lord, I pray even now that during that month, you'll grant some rest to everyone that's involved in making this city better. Thank you, Lord, that you're with us today in your precious Son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers in memoriam? Councilmember Galumbek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nancy Pohanchik passed away this past week. They were former Riverside residents. She's going to be very, very sorely missed by her husband Gene and their daughter Melanie, who works for the Buffalo Police Department as a report technician, died very young, early 60s, mid 60s, but also Mildred, went by Pat Denver, passed away, longtime Black Rock resident. She's going to be sorely missed by her family and friends, especially her husband Richard, and her sister Donna Spinda. That's a big name in Riverside because of the involvement that her and her husband and her family have had. These are going to be two people whose shoes are going to be very difficult to fill.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to take a moment to remember Sarah Gangel, who passed away at the young age of 25 last week. Her mother Sandy Robinson and Pastor Luther Robinson are community leaders in the Lovejoy neighborhood. Sarah was instrumental in helping them open their business, the Speakeasy Restaurant on Lovejoy, and her family's passion for community service really rubbed off on Sarah, and she was always willing to help in the neighborhood. So we just wanted to take some time to remember Sarah and her family and lift them up at this difficult time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to honor the legacy of John Lewis. Losing him, you know, brought to us, to me, a reality about our civil rights moment. He was the last, the youngest speaker during the March on Washington, and he was the last living speaker from that time. And as you've seen the news stories about his life, you couldn't help but to understand where we are standing here today. And it seems to me, as he passes on, he passes the baton to us at a critical juncture in our country, that we should be standing up and fighting and be unafraid to take a beating or to be beat to our death for others. And he did that, and he was very passionate. He wasn't the most elegant speaker, but he had power. His family called him preacher, which I was amazed at. And if you listen to him speak many times, he sounded like a preacher, because he spoke with much vigor and enthusiasm about his conviction. And he was awarded by the first African-American president, Barack Obama, the highest honor as the Medal of Freedom. And I just want to read an excerpt from what the President said on that day about this man, and that on this day that we will remember him and his legacy. There's this quote, it's inscribed over a door in Nashville, where students first refused to leave lunch potters 51 years ago this February. And the quote said, "If not us, then who? If not now, then when?" It's a question John Lewis has been asking his entire life. It's what led him back to the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Salma after he had already been beaten within an inch of his life days before. It's why time and again, he faced down death so that all of us could share equally in the joys of life. It's why all of these years later, he is known as the conscience of the United States Congress, still speaking his mind on issues of justice and equality. And generations from now, when parents teach their children what is meant by courage, the story of John Lewis will come to mind. An American who knew that change could not wait for some other person or some other time, whose life lesson is the fierce urgency of now. God bless, Congressman John Lewis.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We want to acknowledge the families of Johnny Mae Thomas, who passed away last week. She was laid to rest yesterday, and the family of Bernice Jenkins Lawson, who passed away just a couple of days ago. She'll be laid to rest on Thursday. Just to just reflect on the sentiments that we've already kind of shared regarding Congressman John Lewis, I wanted to just read a post that I put up on Facebook the day that I had come to the knowledge that he had passed away. And this is on my Facebook page, and I quote myself, it says, "Who will be the conscience of Congress now? Although Representative John Lewis held this moniker for decades, he was still more than that. He was a physical embodiment of a civil rights movement that we could touch, hear, and see. He was a constant reminder that struggle makes you stronger when you can forgive and move forward with purpose. He was the epitome of advocacy in public service, and his legacy will write our story for generations to come, establishing the gold standard of civil rights work. To answer my own quandary of who will be the conscience of Congress? We will. But more than that, we will be the conscience of the country, and we will honor our beloved Representative Lewis by voting en masse to restore the sanctity of the highest office in this republic to an individual who understands its power, accountability, and responsibility. Rest in his presence, Representative Lewis. No more gratitude, Councilmember Ulysses O'Wingo, Senior." There were only two people in the country that I had wanted to meet in my short 40 years, and one of those people was Representative John Lewis. The other person is, of course, the first African-American president, Barack Obama. But there have been colleagues of mine who have gone to Washington, who have met Mr. Lewis, who have shaken his hand, who have taken pictures with him, and just to be around him, I could only imagine the aura that he gave off. The country should be condoning, shit should be in condolences. We should all offer the country condolences, I'm sorry, for the loss that we are experiencing through John Lewis. And as I think about all of the role models that we have left, he left a huge void. He left a huge void. And that's not to say anything less of anyone who we still have with us, but the loss of John Lewis will leave a huge void. So I'm asking that all Americans everywhere, pray for the family of John Lewis, and pray for us younger elected officials who looked up to people like John Lewis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now just say, rest. All right, hearing none other, we always remember our men and women who have given their lives since our last meeting, and of course, during COVID, we are thanking our essential workers who have really been the front line of this battle. For all of those who have been acknowledged, this council pauses for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you for the appropriate words for all. So that the public understands, we first apologize for signing on late. We had several items that came to us that are very important, that are going to be moved to the top of the agenda, and when we do that, we have to regenerate what's called regenerate our agenda, which we have to wait on the computer. But our council members, we're ready for you at 2:00, but we had to wait on the computer to regenerate that, but I want to apologize to the public for that. On the motion by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on July 7, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you finally have the late files in front of you. Are there any objections to any of the late files that are in front of you? Hearing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda, not taking away your right, to pause the meeting if you need to review an item. There are, as I just said, two items that the majority leader is going to take out of order, because we do have our attorneys on, and they are of utmost importance. So we're not going from the top? What's the number we're calling?
Council President, we're going to take items-
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we do the work? Yeah, we did. Go ahead.
Council President, we're going to take items 46 and 45 out of order in that, in that order.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number 46, City Hall and Buffalo Police, Day Quarter Security.
This item is open?
This item is open, and we have Corporation Counsel and representatives from the Law Department who are going to briefly explain, because this is a late file, and I know the public may have not have had a chance to peruse this item, I would ask that when Corporation Counsel or whoever is coming on, Ms. Chambers, that you would just briefly describe the item and then why this item is in front of us.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me today. My name is Kavat Chambers. I am the Senior Deputy Corporation Counsel for the City of Buffalo. Thank you for reviewing the item. The first item that we're reviewing today is the request that was submitted by the Police Department to rescind the prior award of the contract to Secure Remedy. The reason why this is being rescinded is because we will, the department will no longer continue with the procurement of services through Secure Remedy and instead has filed an extension for G4S. So we will ask that that initial approval be discontinued. The vendor has already been notified that the city will no longer be continuing with the contracting process with them, and that we will issue a new request for proposal in the future.
Corporation Counsel, just so that the council members who are just getting this, and I know this question is about to come at, come to you right now, is there a reason that we're rescinding this contract?
Well, the contract was not actually formalized. It was merely the approval to enter into the contract, and what was stated in the item is that the vendor unfortunately was not able to satisfy all of the requirements that were contained in the request for proposal. So because of that, and to ensure that there was no gap of services, because the council has previously approved a 30-day extension with our current vendor, and they could not guarantee, and in fact, they were not able to actually secure it, then that's what really stopped that procurement with that vendor.
All right, councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Councilmember, and Council President, I appreciate them rescinding this, because it was a mess from day one. And for us to accept this, I think, isn't right, because G4S was mistreated, and they weren't treated fairly. I don't own stock. None of my family works for G4S, but they were done wrong. And I put forth a resolution asking for the information on this process, because we were deceived by the Police Department. We were deceived by the Police Department. And for that to happen, we should not sit on our hands and not go without investigating what went wrong. Because how do we deal with the issues that we're dealing right now? And many people complain about the trust of the Police Department. We are an elected body, and we were presented misinformation. And although some in the administration would say the council member called their person a liar, if you review the video, they did lie. So I want a full investigation of when we're wrong, because it's not right. And if we allow this to happen, and that the council has been deceived, what else will we let happen to us? We have a responsibility. We have the authority to make decisions, and we cannot make sound decisions without good information, good information, trusted information, especially when it comes before a body that we all expect to be trustworthy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Revere?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the approval to rescind the contract with Remedy. Over the year that I've worked with G4S, I have been impressed by their professionalism, the quality of work. So when they didn't apply, it certainly brought up concerns to many of the council members, and I think we've all have spoken on this. The security of City Hall and the Police Department is essential. These are armed guard that provide services to all of those facilities, including the general public. So I am happy today, one, to approve the recension, and secondly, at some point, to approve the extension for G4. I can understand the concerns that Councilmember Rashid Wyatt had. I was on those Zoom meetings with the Police Department, and there wasn't very much clarity, and I hope going forward, there's more clarity, especially during the request for proposal as we move forward in the next few months for the new contract that's going to be coming before us after July of next year. So I agree with the approval of the recension. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just say, I agree with the approval. I just want to be clear on the bid process. You know, I don't prefer one company over other. I just want the best company that would, that wins the bid legally. But I think this had some questions, and so the reason for the recension ultimately is that the company who got it obviously is not ready to go forward, and so I agree with this also. All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protam Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 45, Approval to Extend Contract with G4S Solutions.
Item's open. This item is open. Any discussion? All right.
Councilmember Revere? Mr. Chairman, this is an extension to the contract, taking effect August 1 through June 30 of next year. In between that time, a request for proposal will be going out, and as you mentioned before, other folks will be able to bid on it. So motion is to approve.
Motion is to approve, seconded by Councilmember Wyatt, who has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say much respect to G4S. You know, they were treated unfairly, but still stayed to do the business of the people, and I have much respect for them in doing that. I know that they lost many employees through this process, because they didn't, were going to get their contract, and so I'm hopeful they'll be able to reassemble those great employees. Again, I don't have any stock in the organization. I don't have any family members that work there, but I just want the fundamental fairness for this process. So again, I congratulate them on this one-year extension. They've shown over the last five years, they've done a Herculean job in building out the infrastructure for what we currently have, and we're great with our residents. So again, thank you to them for their patience, and hopefully they can do it, continue to do a great job for the citizens of Buffalo. Thank you.
And there will be a bidding process, just so that the public knows, a fair bidding process, and that does not guarantee that the company who this extension is being given would be the winning bidder, but just asking for a clearer process. And I think the winning bidder, so, because I don't want to scare people away going, well, the council is in love, we don't, we're not with the company, so we don't want to bid, because legally, you have to accept all bids that come in the same way. Do we have any information, Law Department, or of when the RFP? I know we're extending this for a year, so do we know about when the RFP will come back out?
Kavat Chambers, Senior Deputy Corporation Counsel. We don't have a definitive date right now with the department. As the communication also notes, we wanted to ensure that the level of services that are being provided currently by G4S is maintained as we go through the global pandemic. So we don't want to deal with a situation where the protocols that we've put in place with respect to social distancing, wearing a mask, and other precautions that the building has in place right now for those working in the building and entering the building, that there's any disruption or change in the continuity of what is going on. So it will be looked at on a case-by-case basis. As everyone knows, there are predictions for the pandemic increasing in the fall towards the winter, but the goal is to go through that and during that time, eventually put out the RFP, so that the start of the next fiscal year, we will be looking at a potentially new vendor. Or if G4S were selected again, G4S, but an open and fair competitive process will be issued again, so that the contract can be reviewed.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
I just wanted to ask a question. What is it that gives someone the option to extend as opposed to rescind it out for bid?
Kavat Chambers, Senior Deputy Corporation Counsel. Again, the contract term that is normally, well, the contract terms provide for whether or not there is going to be a single term, or whether or not there is going to be any renewal. So every contract, pretty much, that the city enters into, the department will decide how long that contract is going to be for. Normally, a government contract, unless there are extenuating circumstances, should not exceed a total of five years. That is the guidance that we've provided to the department. So you have a one year and four options to renew, or less, depending on what the department chooses. So that's where an extension comes into play. After those extensions have all expired, which is what the case was for this current contract, a new RFP would be issued, or a new competitive bid.
Okay, because I know that we have many contracts that we extend, and some that are expired, that continue on, and there's no issue, but this one in particular, because of the language on it, it said that they could, they could not extend it?
The contract actually said, the original contract did provide for one year and four renewals. What has come to the council is, in the event that there is some extenuating circumstance where the department needs additional time to issue an RFP, then they would actually come to you and ask for an extension beyond that time, which is what we're doing here, because the RFP was issued. There was an issue with the vendor that was selected, so now we need additional time to redo that process. I can't speak on any other contract without more information as to those specific contracts.
Thank you.
But we're going to wrap this up if no one else, but here's a question. So was this contract ever just renewed? Instead of there being, we never renewed this contract. You said they had four opportunities for renewal?
The contract came for extension for three times before the council. The council did approve each extension at the start of each fiscal year.
But could the contract have been renewed, is the question?
That's pretty much the same thing. We're renewing it, extending it.
So we're at the limit with this one coming up, right?
We were, which is why the RFP was issued.
Okay, I think I'm getting a little confused. We, this last, if we approve this now, we are not over the contract extension agreement, or are we?
We are from the original contract. Those last three terms expired, which is why the RFP was issued. So now, in order to issue a new RFP and ensure that there- So now, in order to issue a new RFP and ensure that there's a continuation of services, you have this basic emergency um approval that's being done to ensure that the services continue while a new RFP is issued.
So I think you just used the word that I haven't heard. It's an emergency approval. This is not something that we would normally do.
Under the contract, there were no remaining um extensions, correct? Under their existing, under G four S's existing contract, it was for a year and three renewals. The last renewal expired at the end of the fiscal year. It expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So they were out of contract and no renewal, no extensions available, which is why there was an RFP.
And stop me if if at any time we need to be in executive session, if I am asking uh questions. Um because I'm I'm I I just kind of want to know what gives us the authority to read to to extend if the contract only said a year. Is it the emergency that's at hand?
Uh yes. Under the law, you can actually enter into a contract if there's some unforeseen circumstances.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your answer and for your knowledge.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Uh second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number one, Declaration of State of Emergency, seven fifteen, twenty twenty.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number two, CARES Act, Emergency Services Grant.
Motion to approve items two and three.
Uh second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number four, Michigan Sycamore Historic District.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by President Protemp Scanlon.
Item number five, Permission to Enter into Designated Developer Agreement for Various Slots in a Fruit Belt.
Motion to send to CD, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number six, Permission to Grant Utility Easements to National Grid.
Motion to approve items six and seven, second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt. Item number eight, City of Buffalo Streetlight Audit.
This item is open. Um it's not marked.
Probably received unless someone needs it in committee.
Finance, please.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number nine, Certificate of Appointment for a Community Advocate.
Motion to the Civil Service.
That's fair.
Councilmember Wingo.
I've spoken with the 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 Controller's Office and unless any of my colleagues have any questions regarding this community advocate, of which, of course, they sent an email out regarding some of the information, uh we can approve this. If we, I don't believe that this necessarily needs to go to committee. This person is waiting to work now, so uh if it doesn't, if no one else has any questions, we can approve this item.
No one has any questions already?
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number ten, Change in Contract, City Hall Fire Detection and Alarm System.
Motion to approve items ten. Would you please continue to scroll down? All the way, all the way up until twenty.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Next item.
Item number twenty-one, Permission to Accept Donation of Repair to Rallying at Naval Park.
This is a late file. If there are no objections, motion is to approve. Items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two.
Uh second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number forty-three, Appoint Labor One.
Motion to send to CD items forty-three and forty-four.
Majority Leader, Correction, Civil Service.
Civil Service.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-seven, Drug Asset Forfeiture Wire Wire Transfer.
This is a late file. That one we had approved. Um so forty-seven is to finance?
Yeah, forty-seven isn't a late file, but it is to uh finance.
Right.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Item number forty-seven, Buffalo Firefighter Retirement Ascensive Program.
We are seeing different numbers.
We're seeing different numbers now.
Item number forty-eight, Buffalo Firefighter Retirement Ascensive Program.
Motion to approve items forty-eight and forty-nine.
Second by Councilmember uh Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt. Item number fifty, Brook Thurble, nine thousand five hundred.
Uh this is a late file. Items.
Majority Leader.
Going to claim. But these are going to claims. Okay. Um items fifty through fifty-six, the Claims Committee.
Uh second by Councilmember of Noakowski and just for the public, at the end of the meeting, uh the uh announcement will be when Claims Committee will be meeting. After that Claims Committee, there will be a special meeting of the Common Council uh following that to uh decide on these claims formally. Next item.
Item number fifty-seven, Food Store License, two eighty-one, Grant Street.
Motion to approve.
Second by President Protemp Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number fifty-eight, Food Store License, nine fifty-five, Tonawanda.
That item can be approved, Councilmember.
Motion is to approve.
And before we call the roll, because fifty-nine isn't worth, fifty-nine be approved also?
Mobile food truck, uh you can approve that as well.
So when you call the motion, could you call all those together?
To approve items fifty-nine and sixty.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
So going for roll call for items number fifty-eight through sixty, Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number sixty-one, Tire Handler, sixteen ninety-nine, Main Street.
Motion to send to legislation.
Uh Councilmember, this item is actually going to be a denial.
Well, it's a denial.
Yep. This is the one that uh Councilmember Wingo wanted to speak on for the record.
Yep, just trying to find my mute button. Uh this item here, unfortunately, when we looked at the scanned document of the application, it was determined that the signature, in fact, on the notification page, is not my signature. Therefore, I'm denying this application. Uh I will not accuse him of forging my signature, but I am going to say on the record, that is not my signature. I did not approve that page to be signed with my name, Ulysses O. Wingo Senior. Therefore, Corporation Counsel, that is going to be a denial for those reason, for that reason.
It's been stated on the record for the denial of sixteen ninety-nine Main Street. Next item. Uh did I give the second? Second by Councilmember Wingo. Second. Next item.
Item sixty-two, we have two items sixty-two, just so you know, I don't, the contract extension for Toshiba has been withdrawn. The correct item for sixty-two is appoint inclusionary compliance officer.
All right, for the record, um motion?
I I is that an approved? So we can approve items? Oh, that one goes to Civil Service? Are we at sixty-two?
Yes, sir.
That's withdrawn, you say?
No, the, so there are two items that the the computer generated sixty-two. The contract extension of Toshiba is being withdrawn.
Okay, got you. So the sixty-two to Civil Service.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number sixty-three, Approval for Parking Department to Enter into Lease of New Impala Location.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt. Item number sixty-four, Liquor License.
Motion to receive and file items sixty-four and sixty-five.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number sixty-six, Appoint Legislative Aid.
Motion to adopt items sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number sixty-eight, Reopening Schools.
Motion to send to Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number sixty-nine, Crisis Services, Recommendation and Guidance for Assistant Buffalo Police Department with Mental Health Issues.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember.
Make the motion, the the document that was filed actually asks for this to be sent to the Police Oversight Committee. Or CD, but I I believe that the preference was the Police Oversight Committee.
Councilmember, after several discussions with the board members on crisis services, they were content with either committee, thinking that police oversight would be more appropriate by theme, but whatever could get attention for the council members sooner. At this time, that would be CD.
Understood. Thank you.
Motion stands.
Motion stands, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seventy, Draft a Carol's Law, Duty to Intervene Law.
Motion to send to legislation.
Motion to send to legislation, second by Councilmember Wingo. And on this, this is uh was sent into us. This is not a common council document, um but it was sent into us to review. So it will be reviewed uh through the Legislation uh Committee, uh just so that the public has clarity on what the council is doing with uh this item.
Item number seventy-one, Caucus Meeting Transcription.
Is that a receive and file? Receive and file items seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number seventy-six, Letter for State Legislation for Buffalo Police Department Residency.
Motion to send to legislation.
Um on this item, um and it's second by uh Councilmember Farrelotto. This is a letter that was sent to me uh actually uh after some discussion with uh Assembly, the Majority Leader Crystal People Stokes, uh contacted me about the moves that are being made right now in the state uh to give the City of Buffalo, uh in particular, um the right to uh establish a law that would allow us to have residency for new uh police officers coming in. It is very important law that is going through Albany uh right now, uh and I asked for a letter that would explain that as she uh has sent. Um I know that there is, are a lot of questions on whether that is right, whether it is wrong. Um I have weighed in continuously uh on this, uh did prayers yesterday um of how important I think it is. Um you know, we had discussions before about the Police Department representing uh the people in the City of Buffalo. And I know there's some response of against this is that, you know, some people feel it, some new officers may feel it's dangerous to live in the City of Buffalo. If a police officer feels it's dangerous to live in the City of Buffalo, um eh but want to receive taxpayer dollars, I I do have, I do take issue with that. Um I was just asked by a reporter, um you know, about people wanting to live wherever they want to live, and I I totally agree with that. That people should be able to live wherever they want to. However, I believe if you want to uh work for, if you want to be in East Aurora and you want to be a police officer, a new police officer, then go to East Aurora. Um you you want it, you want to live in Lancaster, then go go to Lancaster. Uh but for for many reasons, too many to mention here right now. Um the relationships, the reason I support this one hundred percent is because of building of relationships. And I think that's what this is about, uh at least from me, is how do we build relationships with people and the people who provide public safety? Um and it would not affect people who are already in uh already in the Police Department. But some people do not realize, at this point right now as we speak, there is no residency requirement. So two classes have gone through the academy, uh who they don't don't have to live uh where they're fed from. And so they are able uh to get their check on the uh paid by taxpayer dollars from those of us who are local, and then they get to go to the suburbs. Uh the second thing that, and finally, for for me at this point, that was presented to me was um, you know, people are afraid for their families, that some of the new recruits will be afraid for their families. Well, I think that people in the City of Buffalo, especially in high crime neighborhoods, have been afraid for their families every day. So I don't think, and they're not getting paid to be afraid. They're not getting paid to be afraid. So at the end of the day, those arguments for me just don't wash, um because if if everybody is doing their job and their part, then 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 you you do your job and then your neighborhood doesn't have the crime uh for you to be afraid. I just want to be clear that I give support uh to this uh letter and uh resolution will be coming forward um in our special session, um possibly to uh support this. Um Councilmember Wingo, rec- Chair recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh first of all, we have to go back and understand that the exact reason why uh they, the the right to live anywhere uh in the state is being challenged right now as far as being a municipal police officer. This day is back to the war. Uh which world war, I can't uh exactly remember right now. This day is back to the war when we needed people to come into the city to work these jobs because people were being shipped out to do duty, tours of duty in the military service. That is no longer needed right now. And the fact of the matter is people who apply to be a police officer, you have to live in the City of Buffalo in order to apply ninety days. If you're already living here for ninety days, then what does it really matter if you have to stay living in the city after those ninety days? Councilmembers have to live in the City of Buffalo. We have to live in our district, so we can't even, I couldn't live in Delaware if I wanted to. I couldn't live in Ellicott or University if I wanted to. I couldn't live in Fillmore or Lovejoy. I couldn't live in Niagara. I could not live in any other district other than Masson District if I want to work for the City of Buffalo, representing the Mass. I think this is ridiculous. Now, the fact of the matter is, they have an argument where uh they 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 have said that uh they they fear for their families' lives. They fear for their own lives. Well, if you built a relationship with the community, you wouldn't have anything to worry about. I've gone on vacation before. I've left my front door wide open. I've gotten phone calls from these same people that they're afraid to serve and protect. Mr. Wingo, you 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 left your front door open. Don't worry about it, man. We got it for you. You you good, you good. Because of the relationship that we have with the community. I believe that we need to make sure that the police officers have these relationships with the community so that we can continue to build this community to policing. This community policing is the point. This community policing is the point, that is the purpose, community policing. That means the community polices itself, not that we don't need police, but the community polices itself. And that means the police will be a part of, everyone guessed it, the community. So I, 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 I wanted to say thank you to, uh, the Majority Leader of the Assembly, Crystal People Stokes, and as well to State Senator Tim Kennedy for drafting these letters of support because I believe that it is absolutely ridiculous that, uh, if you need to live in the city to apply to work for the city, why then after you start working for the city, you shoot straight out for the suburbs? I'm done.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, um, you know, if you look at it and talk about people being in danger, our city court judges who send people to jail, not just arrest, have to live in the city of Buffalo. Um, and so there are other dangerous jobs, as you just said, our address is public, everybody, you know, and we, we have to make, um, decisions. So, um, hopefully we'll be able, um, those who would like to support it will be able to support it soon. Councilmember Galumbek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanna go on the record and state that I wanna thank Mayor Brown, um, for pushing this through as well. Um, I know that for the past several weeks, especially, uh, he and I have become, uh, especially fond phone buddies, um, talking to each other several times a week at length about different proposals that are in front um, of the city of Buffalo right now. And one of the things that we talked about was residency requirement. And I agree with much of what my colleague said about the importance of having people living in the city of Buffalo. Um, I think that that's one of the big problems that we have, uh, in the city is, is that we have too many people that come in, collect a paycheck and then leave. And I'm not saying that they're not dedicated, and that's whether it's school teachers or whether it's, um, uh, police officers or any other employees. But there's a reason that Buffalo is consistently ranked, uh, what, number three as the poorest cities of our size in the country? And it's because we give a very, very fair wage to many employees and then allow them to go and live in another municipality. Um, in a perfect world, I would never support a residency requirement. Um, in a perfect world, people should be able, be able to live wherever they want to, so on and so forth. Um, but the reality of the situation is, is that we don't live in a perfect world. And if you wanna work for the city of Buffalo and make very, very fair wages, I believe that you ought to be a resident. Now, of course, there's some problems there, you know, if you have a husband and a wife, uh, you know, one that's a schoolteacher in Niagara Falls and one that's gonna be a police officer in Buffalo, I believe both of those would have residency requirements. So I think that there's ways that we can work around that, you know, when you have a situation like that, um, you know, and so on. But there, there's gonna be unforeseen consequences of this. Um, you know, what I especially appreciate about this is that in the past, we would have had to negotiate with the union in order to get a residency requirement. Um, I know that we've tried in the past, I've sponsored in the past and, and co-sponsored with my colleagues to push for residency. Um, and we've asked Albany in the past to support residency and they have not, um, because we have not wanted to have to use a, a bargaining chip, if you will, um, when we're negotiating with the union for something that is as much a no-brainer as simply allowing the city of Buffalo to make it a requirement that those who work for, uh, different departments, in this case, it's, uh, the police department, that they live in the city of Buffalo. Now, however, this doesn't address something else. Um, and as much as I do want police officers who live in the city of Buffalo, um, what I think that also needs to be addressed is the people that apply for exams, for civil service exams, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's, uh, teachers, uh, in the city of Buffalo. And I think that there ought to be some sort of a, um, a help that's given, whether it's a, a boost in one's score. Um, I know that at one time when you took the Buffalo Teachers Exam, part of your score was a inter, was an interview, uh, with a group of people. And I think that, and the, and this is gonna be a little bit, uh, you know, complicated and maybe some people are gonna be upset with it. But I think that one of the problems that we have in Buffalo, and this is coming from somebody, I'm in the same house, uh, pretty much that I've lived in my entire life. I've lived in the city of Buffalo my entire life except for brief times in college and teaching, um, in other parts of the state and the country. Um, but I think that going along with residency, people that grew up in the city of Buffalo feel far more comfortable around people who are different. And I say different in, uh, quotation marks because I can pretty much walk into a room, um, anywhere in the city of Buffalo and not feel awkward because I'm different because the people that I've walked into in the rooms have been just people that I know, people that are residents, just people. Um, I think that when you get brought up in a different community, there is much more of a sense of the other than there is if you're brought up in the city of Buffalo. Um, you know, if I walk down the street and I see five people walking towards me, whether they're black, white, Latino, male, female, whatever, if they're, if they're big people that are coming towards me, I'm gonna be a little bit nervous. I'm not gonna be no, more nervous because they're one thing rather than the other, but that's because I grew up in Buffalo, that's because I have friends and I have acquaintances that cross pretty much every ideological, racial, ethnic, et cetera, divide. Um, but I think that that's something that needs to be addressed is, you know, how do people that have never dealt with the diverse community suddenly get thrown into a city like Buffalo where you have economic and ethnic and racial and religious and all sorts of, uh, diversity? And you don't know how to deal with that. That's not necessarily something that can be taught to you. And I think that this is something that needs to be addressed. And once again, I think that maybe one of the ways to do it is by looking at the way the Buffalo Teachers Exam either is or was, uh, developed years ago, where it took into consideration, you know, the, um, interview process, how you dealt with other people. It wasn't psychological, it wasn't, you know, checking to see if you were psychologically balanced or not. It was checking to see how you could relate with people in different circumstances. So, well, I think this is a great huge step forward and kudos to the mayor, uh, and everything else. I do think that we need to look at this idea of residency, where one grew up and how it has an impact on people that work in the city of Buffalo and how you rate, relate with people who are quote-unquote different from you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very, very interesting perspective and I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I support this and, um, thank the, uh, Majority Leader for her leadership on this. I'm truly hopeful that we'll have more situations like this because we have a contract that's gonna be come before us, what, eight hundred pages? And when we talking about changing, uh, systemic racism and addressing the many, many issues that we have with law enforcement, with other entities, um, we have to look at that and we need the state's buy-in to address many of those issues. I was so happy to hear the governor say a couple of days ago that if there's not substantive change regarding reform, um, he's going to do some defunding. Um, and I appreciate that because that speaks to the urgency of now to address the many myriad of issues, um, that must be addressed. When we talk about residency and we're giving, in a, a, give, uh, we have a contract in which officers, depending on their status, are able to drive out to Orchard Park with a city vehicle with city gas on a taxpayers' dime. Oh, no. How do we allow that to happen? That doesn't even make any sense. So I'm, I'm very proud that she started with this, this first step. Um, I wish it was a bigger step, but we'll take every step that we can get because we know we have a lot ahead of us. Um, so I definitely support, um, this legislation and look forward to signing on, um, for the city of Buffalo and for the residents of Buffalo because anyone who gets a check, a check for the city of Buffalo should live in the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'm sorry, did we finish the motion? Did I give you a first and a second?
Yes.
All right.
Item number seventy-seven, request to speak for, at Education Committee.
Motion to send Education Committee?
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number seventy-eight, Alleyway Theater requests approval to receive grant funds.
Motion to send the C D.
All right, motion, just a question on this, uh, we're sending it to C D, would, would they, would that hold up their grant funds? Do we need to send it to C D? Is there a reason?
Go back to the item, please.
Cause it, it's just them receiving a grant. If we send it to C D, they wouldn't be able to receive it until after September.
Yeah, I don't know why it's marked to C D, I don't have a problem approving it, if it's just approval?
Was there anybody who had a reason that they wanted it to go to C D? All right.
Motion is, motion is now to approve.
All right, motion, did, um, I'm sorry, uh, City Court, did I give you a second on that or am I okay?
You're okay.
All right. Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
And it's going for approval, correct?
Yes.
All right, so roll call. Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Committees, Civil Service, item number one, notice of appointments, tent provisional or permanent.
Motion is to receive and file item number one.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number two, Carol Horn, statement regarding injury while, while on duty.
Motion is to send this item to Ledge. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct, two and three.
Motion is to send items two and three to Ledge.
Second by Councilmember Fierlato.
Finance, item number four, approval to renew contract with Exxon Enterprise.
Finance?
Mo- motion to, well, recommit?
Motion is to recommit. Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number five, approval to renew contract with Debs Access Services.
Motion to receive and file five, six, and seven.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number eight, approval to renew contract with Pell for Buffalo Peacemakers.
Motion to approve.
Second by the Majority Leader Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto? Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt? Item number nine, approval to renew contract with Western New York Polygraph Services.
Chairman?
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number ten, approval to renew contract with Washington Computers.
Motion to approve.
Second by, uh, Councilmember Galumbek.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto? Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon? Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Community Development, item number eleven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, consi- Consolidated Plan and Twenty Twenty Annual Action Plan.
Motion is to approve items eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second by the Majority Leader Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Councilmember Wyatt?
Um, I just, I'm gonna approve this, but I'm expecting the additional information regarding the breakout of the dollars that are spent by district. Um, I did get something from, um, Brendan regarding, uh, twenty-seven, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, but nothing for twenty nineteen. So I'm gonna trust that they're gonna give me the information and not play us on this. So we asked for this information, I don't know why we wouldn't have twenty nineteen, but we got three years ago. Um, but I'm gonna support this as far as an approval. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rivera, before we take the word.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Councilmember Wyatt, we had asked, um, for breakdowns, comparisons, uh, to see whether or not there is proportion, um, that each district is treated proportionately. Not only with C D B G, but we asked them, any funds that's intertwined, whether it's Bureau, whether it's C D B G, any money that comes in, we need to know the breakdown, how this money is spent proportionate by districts. And that's the only way I could, at least explain to my constituents, yes, that we're treated fairly when it comes to all funding that comes through the city, through C D B G, through Bureau, whatever funding source that comes in through the city. We need to break it down to know, uh, how it impacts our district and how proportionate it is. So we're gonna continue to ask O S P to provide us with this information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman? Councilmember Farrelotto? Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, comments on the draft consolidation plan and annual action plan.
Motion is to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number fifteen, report to cell thirteen fifteen, East Donovan.
Motion is to approve items fifteen and sixteen.
Second by President Protemp Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Legislation, item number seventeen, thirty-one, forty-eight, Main Street.
Motion to receive and file.
Um, you wanna, uh, do all of them? Down to?
See, file items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second by the Majority Leader.
Item number twenty-one, special use permit, one seventy-two, Rhode Island.
Motion is to approve this item as well as item twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, um, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Uh, second by Councilmember, um, Galumbek.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three, supplemental info for special use permit for Six Highgate.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Resolutions, item number seventy-nine, carry street concerns.
Was there someone trying to be recognized?
Yeah, yes, Council President.
Uh, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, I was just, I was sitting here thinking about, um, the, I, I guess we could revisit it. Can we revisit item number eleven in, um, what was it in? Community Development, the Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan?
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, item is before.
Um, I'm just sitting here thinking, and I could be wrong, and we'll, uh, we'll get the information from Brendan, I would assume at some point, but I'm wondering if the reason we didn't get a breakdown of two thousand nineteen, if that's the current year we're in, spending the money? I don't know, but just so, it maybe put that on everyone's radar, that could be the case, just so maybe that's not what the mo, it was withheld from us, maybe it's just the fact that we're still currently spending, so we don't have the final answer for that yet. I was just sitting here looking at the item and wondering if that was the case, that's all.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, and it, it very well could be.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Back to the dinner?
Item number seventy-nine, in resolutions, carry street concerns.
Mr. Majority Leader, can you please make a motion to adopt?
Motion is to adopt.
Motion is to adopt, second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number eighty, P C, Western New York Pride Flags.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number eighty-one, trailblazing sign in honor of Margaret Rose Brown.
Motion to approve.
Yes, I just wanted to speak, uh, quickly on this, um, for this trailblazing sign for Margaret Rose Brown Hamilton. Um, in nineteen ninety-seven, um, she opened the New Life Residential Center on Memorial Drive for women that are in recovery. And in nineteen seventy-eight, she completed a twelve-step program to recover from substance abuse herself. So by her being open and honest with her, uh, struggles, she's allowed others to do the same and help them along the way. So that is why I have this trailblazing sign, and I thank you for the approval.
Thank you, sir. And that was seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number eighty-two, Carol Horn, pension inquiry.
Motion to send to legislation, items eighty-two and eighty-
Motion is sent to legislation, items eighty two and eighty three.
Uh, second by Councilmember Wyatt, this item, uh, basically is asking our attorney, our corporation counsel, uh, to answer a, a question that we have heard out in the community. I want, want clarity, uh, on it, and that's basically the community saying the council, uh, should restore and make, uh, Carol Horn a whole. Um, and so what I'm asking the law department to do is to tell this council, uh, or to give an opinion on whether this council has any power for that to happen. So I want to be very clear about what this is about. Um, we have heard from, uh, the state attorney general, who has sent a letter, uh, that we received, uh, just recently to the controller, again, asking the, uh, the controller. Um, and that wasn't by our request, that was by the AG's request, was now, um, uh, involved after our request to the AG. Uh, so, um, the attorney general has sent, and in her letter, which we are filing today, uh, she does give support, um, to this matter. Um, so that is something significant. So, um, I just wanted to make sure it's Corporation Counsel that the, uh, request is clear of what we hope to hear on to, we, we, I, I know there's a date on it, would you need longer? Uh, or can you make it by that date? We wouldn't have another meeting, or would you be, may you have that answer on Tuesday in committee?
Um, Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon, I believe we, um, we will do our best to try and have that answer for you on Tuesday, um, next Tuesday's meeting.
Oh, that would be wonderful, but that way we would be able to hear exactly what this council has the power to do and what they do not. Um, because that is the request of many in the community, but I'm not sure what the power is of the council. Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President, I think you make a very interesting point regarding this, this, everything surrounding this, this former police officer, is that we constantly hear things from the community regarding this, in this situation. And, um, I am completely comfortable requesting Corporation Counsel provide us with a written opinion on what authority this, whether it's this council or the administration may have regarding this issue. However, there are some, like I, like you said, we're receiving information from the public, and there are a lot of discrepancies surrounding the actual reason why this officer was terminated and the amount of service time that should be attributed to the officer, um, whether it was the police department or a independent arbitrator, who was the final decision maker on termination. So because of those facts, coupled with the fact that New York State has repealed fifty, I'd like the Corporation Counsel to include within their response to this resolution, if possible, um, this officer's records and the arbitration ruling that exists. So, um, so we can provide that to this council, so that this council, including myself, is no longer replying upon hearsay from people from the public, from people from the public and other officers, rather, we have all the facts surrounding the entire situation, so that we can make informed decisions. So a possible, within their response, I'd like them to provide us with, um, the, the disciplinary records and the, the arbitration ruling surrounding this officer as well.
Now, that would, I would believe would probably take an amendment for this, unless you wanted to file something that would ask for that? Because this doesn't ask for the records of the officer.
Okay, then I, I can file something for Tuesday if need be, if that's the case, just again, because.
I think it would keep it clean, and because I think there would be some who would object to that. Um, so I think to keep it clean, if you filed something for that, then we can, we can consider that in front of this council.
Okay, I will do so.
And, and I'll be very clear, and I'll, I'll come right to you, Councilmember Gullumbe, I have, uh, supported, um, to make, uh, Ms. Horn uh, whole in some ways, but I think that the informa, we need to know, like you just said, Councilmember Scanlon, let's, let's know what our powers are. And let the public know, so that if the council has the ability, um, or like you said, or the administration, then at least we can work from a position of knowledge and knowing, and then be able to inform of the public, uh, in this, so I, I, I really hope that we are able, uh, to get something by Tuesday. Councilmember Gullumbe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I have asked, uh, representatives from the law department to get copies of Officer Horn's file, um, especially after the mayor had done the press conference several weeks ago, when many of these questions were brought up. Because, you know, I think that the general populace believes that just because we're council members, or mayors, or whatever it happens that we are, that we can wave a magic wand, have a vote, and simply make things happen. Um, my understanding, uh, has been that, you know, this was a, uh, arbitration in Albany, it was a decision that could have been, uh, made in Buffalo, um, with the officer, you know, agreeing to a, 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 a three day, uh, suspension or something like that, I can't remember. Um, in that, uh, the officer in question decided to go to Albany, and they went in front of arbitration, and it was an arbiter in, uh, Albany that actually recommended the termination. The, I want to know for sure what happened, I want to see the file. Um, and I think that, as Mr. Scanlon said, with the fifty A having taken place, um, that should open up all of these files, so that we can know exactly what did happen and what did not happen. Um, you know, with the file, uh, potentially being able to be put in front of us, um, we can look at everything, see the timeline, and know what exactly happened. Um, you know, why the officer was let go, I think that there's, and I, I think I know more simply because I've been on the council longer, and I remember when this issue has come up in the past, that it's a far more complex issue than it's just black or white, good or bad, and I mean, clear cut. It's not a clear cut, you know, why, uh, everything happened, it's far more complex. And I think that the residents of the city of Buffalo, I think that the council, I think everybody needs to know this. Um, and I think it's very important to know what our, and as you mentioned, what it is that we are allowed to do. Um, we can't just simply vote on giving somebody a pension, or changing tiers, or anything like that. So I think that this is very, very important, um, you know, I have a, a call, I think, with Mr. Ball tomorrow that this was gonna be a part of. But as I mentioned, because there's litigation, my understanding has been that the entire file, maybe, uh, none of the file is currently available, um, but I would love to have it clocked in in front of the council, so that anybody that goes to our website could take a look and see how complex this issue is, and that it's not as simple as just, uh, you know, simply giving this person their pension back by a vote of the council, um, or by the mayor, I thought the mayor did a very fine job at his press conference last month, when he went, he spent about ten or fifteen minutes explaining, you know, point by point by point, um, as to what happened, and I think that that's what residents need to know, what really happened, and not the myth that has developed. Thank you.
Uh, before, thank you, um, and before I come to Councilmember Rivera and then Wyatt, um, you know, the fifty A is fine. He, here's my only thought, and this is just my thought in this discussion, is that regardless of what her disciplinary record is for past events, my concentration is on that day. Um, I, I remember when, when City Grill happened, and, um, Margaret Sullivan was the, um, editor of the Buffalo News, and they started digging in, uh, to the records, uh, of the people who were the victims. And, and so that was i- in, in a way, to get rid of what happened that day to those people. And so for me, it is about, um, that day, um, more than anything. Um, I don't, I don't know much about her records of the day before, or the year before, but if on that day, if I truly believe that a person may have been trying to actually stop an officer from hurting someone, to me, that's for me, just for me, what, what the focus is, why I'm hesitant about adding those other pieces to this. But if there's a resolution that comes forward, we'll go, uh, from it when that comes. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, in fairness, if we're going to request, uh, the records of Mrs. Carol Horn, Carol Horn, then it would only be fair that we request the records of the officer that is at the center of all this. And that is the other officer who has since, not only then, that particular day, but going forward, because there has been incidences, um, where he has, um, been brought up on charges and even convicted. So I would like, if we're gonna ask for records, then let's ask for all of the records in order to, for us to look at the merits of the whole thing. I mean, just to ask for her record, I think it's totally unfair, unless we ask for everyone's record associated with that.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more with my colleague, um, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Katuski got to keep his pension on bad circumstances, on charges, but Ms. Carol Horn doesn't. And I think, to me, it is simple as black and white. And I know my colleague says, oh, it's not about that, it's about this and that, but hey, it's about the facts. Mr. Katuski, who was convicted, keeps his pension. And Ms. Carol Horn, nah, so it's a simple fact to me, and it's unfortunate that we are at this point. But I stand with Carol Horn, she intervened and saved a man's life. It's not about her past record, it's about what she did on that day, I agree with the Council President. This is unfortunate, but I think a right should be corrected. I think the state AG has, uh, uh, given her opinion, and we should support that opinion. And I hope that we have the authority to make this woman whole, because she has struggled for twenty years for doing something we all champion today, that's the right thing to do. And for us to go back and revisionist history on her record, when the person who was accused of the problems was fired and kept their pension, is just absurd. Thank you.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yeah, thank you, I, I have no problem with bringing the other information into it, as Councilmember Rivera brought up, that's fine, I don't mind that. I think we should have all the facts involved, but my point is that if the Buffalo Common Council's being asked to weigh in or use authority that we have to maybe alter a decision regarding this pension, we do need all those facts. And again, I don't know what the determining factors for the termination of this officer what were. So again, if we have all those records, the arbitration ruling, and everything that goes into it, I know you, Council President, you referenced what happened that day, but I don't know if that was the determining factor for termination. That's why I'm asking for all of those records and the arbitration ruling, so that we know all of the facts surrounding the termination, that we can now look for, then we can look into the, the pension time, which should be attributed, et cetera. So I'm just simply looking for all of the facts surrounding the situation.
Um.
Member Gullumbe, I'm sorry, Corporation Counsel?
Yes, Assistant Corporation Counsel for Karen Gordon, I think, given, um, some of the new requests and other discussions, um, it, uh, August fourth would probably be a better, uh, timeline for, for me.
No, I want, I want to be clear, i- if the, what is before us are not the, those questions, Councilmember Scanlon said he will file an item. So we're not asking you on Tuesday to do the fifty A, you have one item in front of you. And that is, does the common council of the city of Buffalo have the authority, basically, to, to, uh, summarize, have the authority to do anything in this case to make her whole? So I don't want to lump those together, because there has not been a motion by this council for, to request those records.
Okay, but I think the resolution asked for August fourth, so if it's okay with the council, as I said earlier, I'll try my best to do it by next week, but if, if August fourth will still suffice, I would prefer August fourth.
Okay, I, I would, I, I still hope that you're, because we will be out, and that's the only reason, we'll be out for the entire, uh, month of August. And, and these situations will just keep bubbling up and bubbling up. I think that the people, and it is entirely, um, uh, my fault on the writing of the resolution for that date. Um, at, but as, as we are hearing more people ask, um, I think that if we can get just the one item, it's just one question, basically, uh, answered, and then when it, when Councilmember, uh, President Protemp Scanlon sends his resolution, and then we vote on that, uh, of whether there is enough support, um, for, for what he is asking.
Okay, thank you.
Also, it was brought up by one of my colleagues, I can't remember, that there is litigation on this. Has the city been served litigation on the Carol Horn matter, Corporation Counsel?
To the best of my knowledge, the city has received letter informing of new council that, uh, Ms. Horn has retained. And, um, usually that is suggestion that there might be, um, uh, formal litigation, um, procedures filed. And so although we have not received any, at this point, there could be, and in the making sometime soon. So currently, no.
Mm-hmm, I'm sorry.
So currently, the answer is no, that we don't, we don't have, um, any, um, current litigation proceedings with Ms. Horn, but we have been informed, or we've been contacted by her attorney.
So I just wanted to be clear, because I don't want anybody to run and say there's litigation, yet, there is no litigation. Uh, there's only the information that she has, has a new attorney. Um, all right, any other discussion on this? Did I miss somebody? Thought I saw another hand up. All righty, so that'll be going to committee, and hopefully, our very capable, uh, Corporation Counsel, uh, and the teams of, uh, attorneys that are here in the city will be able to get an answer to the, what is asked of, that I've asked for the resolution, and that has been supported, I believe unanimously, uh, from this council. Um, City Clerk, did I get a first and a second on that, or did we just go to discussion?
You did, you got a first and a second, it's going to legislation.
All right, thank you.
Item number, no problem, item number eighty four, Appoint Marriage Officer.
What number are we on?
Eighty four.
Okay, before we go to eighty four, I apologize, um, item number eighty three. Um, and as we talk about today residency, uh, we talk about residency with the police department. Um, what item number eighty three asks is for our human resources, basically, department to come, uh, to explain to us, um, what, what do they do with employees who are current employees, um, who claim residency? And the reason I think this is important is because if we're going to talk about police, and we're gonna talk about police residency, then we have to ensure, uh, that, uh, we are following residency from, from, from all of us. So at the end of the day, we need to know what is that process, um, has that process been triggered? Uh, making sure that we are not just utilizing a phone bill, um, for residency, um, so that we can ensure that we're being fair, if we're talking about police, we gotta make sure, uh, for all of our public employees. Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President, um, several years ago, I filed the resolution that the council, the council approved, I believe we approved it, um, asking for, um, an allocation of funding to beef up residency inspectors within the, the, that department. So it's something that I'd like to revisit with the council as well, moving forward.
I, I agree, thank you, sir, and I see a lot of heads shaking, yes.
Absolutely.
Yep, thank you, all right. Next item?
Item number eighty four, Appoint Marriage Officer.
Is that an adopt?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt items eighty four, eighty five, and eighty six.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number eighty seven, Request for Information, Armed Guard Services, City Hall.
This is a late file. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I spoke earlier about this item, um, and I just want to ask, if we don't, um, to our Corporation Counsel, if we don't get information, what is our option? What is, what other things can we do to get this information that I requested?
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon, and this is for item eighty seven?
Yes.
Um, I'm not, at this point, I cannot say definitively that I can give you an answer as to what to do, I mean, you've requested the information, they should provide information, um, you have a, the subpoena power that a council has, um, to call individuals to the council, you know, to answer questions. Perhaps you might, uh, have to take it to the level of, um, doing that, but outside of that, there's nothing at my fingertips now that I can share with you as a, a, another recourse.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, uh, Ms. Gordon, can you, I know you can subpoena people, you can subpoena items, or is that all within the law?
Please repeat the question?
So I know we can s- subpoena people, persons to appear before this body. Can we also subpoena, for instance, information, if information didn't come forward?
Basically, yes, usually when you subpoena a person, you are also subpoena, you also have the authority to subpoena documents. So in a subpoena letter that goes out, it would list the name of the individual that is required to come to, uh, to answer questions at council. And if there's any specific documents that a council would also like to review and see that the council believes that individual would be in possession of, those documents can also be subpoenaed with the individual.
Thank you.
And one final question, can I, can I, um, add to the record, or is it already a matter of record? Because we had the video. Because we had the video on the incident or the conversation we had with the Police Department regarding, um, the, um, security guard, um, contract.
What do you mean, add to the record?
I want to add that piece to the record that I'm requesting of information.
Um, and, uh, Corporation Counsel, you can go ahead, Corporation Counsel.
So Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon, I, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking, because the rec- the record is already, the record is, has already been created, it's in the past. So if you're speaking to specifically what you can ask for, then that's different. And I think when you send out, when you actually send out the subpoena notice, if you were to do that, then you can always include anything else in there, but if it's for something entirely new, then maybe you want to, um, put out a new resolution. Just to keep everything clean and clear, so it's not, you know.
Okay.
Muddled.
I mean, the video is still part of our record, that's, that's my.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's the, that's the, yeah.
So can we adopt this and then send the rest to legislation?
Motion to adopt, resolves remainder to legislation, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you.
Announcement at committee meetings, the follow meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, follow on Civil Services, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at one PM. And Committee on Community Development is Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, at twenty, twenty-twenty, at two PM. And Committee on Claims, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at three PM. Special committees will be Committee on Education, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at eleven AM.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Maston District has quite a few events coming up, uh, for the community. Uh, first and foremost would be this coming Thursday, the twenty-third, at Sixty Headley, the old farmhouse, uh, from one to three PM, there will be COVID testing. For anyone who wants to come out, please pre-register on the website, you can find that on our district webpage, on our Facebook page. Um, so that will be again, this Thursday, the twenty-third, at Sixty Headley, right off of Jefferson, between the hours of one PM and three PM, please come between those times. Second, uh, there's going to be a virtual, uh, credit workshop this Thursday as well, uh, starting at six PM on our Maston District Facebook page, there's going to be a virtual credit workshop. So if you're looking to get your credit back on point, if you're looking to get your credit on track, clean it up, and increase your credit score, uh, please go to this training, this session, uh, this workshop on Thursday, the twenty-third, uh, on our Facebook page, beginning at six PM. Also, uh, this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, we will have a digital workshop for seniors only. Seniors is sixty-two and up, seniors only can pre-register by calling eight-five-one-five-one-four-five. If your grandmother, if your aunt, your uncle, your grandfather, anyone, uh, who is a senior, uh, over the age of sixty-two, who would like some assistance with setting up their mobile devices with, uh, Facebook or, um, Twitter, or any type of, uh, medium, please, we're going to ask that you meet us at the Delavan Rider Center this Saturday from nine to eleven. Seating is limited as we are practicing social distancing. So the, so the capacity is twenty-five right now, you must register, again, that number that, uh, for you to register is eight-five-one-five-one-four-five, so that's three things. Thursday, two big events on Thursday, that's the COVID testing, um, at, uh, Sixty Headley, and then there's the virtual credit workshop, uh, that's going to be on our Facebook page at six PM on Thursday. And then on Saturday, again, Delavan Rider Center, eight-seventy-seven East Delavan, at, uh, nine AM to eleven AM, seniors only, digital workshop for helping you set up your Zoom accounts and your Facebook accounts on your mobile devices, so that you can keep up with all of the things that are happening in the community, uh, today, being that we are living in this COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, we are also doing a COVID testing this Thursday from ten AM until noon. That's at eighteen thirty-three Clinton Street, it's, uh, St. Casper's Church Parking Lot, and you must pre-register at raffamilymedicine.com backslash, backslash testing. I'll post everything on my official Councilmember page as well. And then our, uh, Schiller Park Senior Center is hosting a food giveaway, a senior food giveaway Friday, July thirty-first, from twelve to three, it's for seniors over, uh, sixty and over, and they'll have fresh fruits, vegetables, and pre-cooked meats. Uh, Schiller Park Senior Center, twenty-fifty-seven Genesee Street, and I'll have those, uh, details on my Facebook page as well. Thank you, Mister Chair.
All right, and before Mark's phone goes back out, um, there will be a virtual meeting for Fruit Belt, uh, residents and stakeholders, uh, that is being called by, uh, myself and the mayor. Uh, it is on Wednesday, July twenty-second, five-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, you can go to our Facebook page for the WebEx, uh, number to be able to, uh, join that meeting. And this is about the roadway improvement, specifically, um, looking at the sinkholes and the study that is about to occur, um, and that Fruit Belt residents have waited for, for a very, very long time. And that is starting to move forward, Wednesday, July twenty-second, um, five-thirty to six-thirty, and the information is on our Facebook page. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, thank you, Mister President, um, just want to let the people know, in University District or throughout the city of Buffalo, on Aug- Saturday, August first, we will have a food giveaway, um, the open market at thirty-two forty-six Bailey, the corner of Dartmouth. It will be taking place from ten AM to twelve PM. You must call and register, eight-five-one-five-one-six-five to register, it's open to the public. Um, we'll also be giving PPE, um, a- as well, um, but you must call and register, we have a limited supply. So if you give us a call, eight-five-one-five-one-six-five, um, you can register and pick up a box of food with meat and produce, fresh vegetables, um, thanks to, um, Chris, uh, April Baskins, our chairwoman, Keybank, and, um, that's it, me. Thank you.
All righty, anyone else? All right, hearing none, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Councilmember Galumbek. You stand adjourned, thank you.